This is the organizational school board meeting of November 17th, 2020. It is my privilege as superintendent to chair the school board meeting until such time as the chairman is elected for the coming year. In order to minimize seat movement amid COVID concerns, I will chair from my normal seat. Once the chairman is selected, we will sanitize any changed seating areas before reconvening. The first order of business this evening is the administration of the oath of office. The Honorable Judge Charles Crawford will administer the oath to our returning board member, Mr. Matt Susan, District Four, and Ms. Joan Taddy, a former Brevard educator of 41 years, will administer the oath to newly elected board member, Ms. Jennifer Jenkins, District Three. First, we welcome Mrs. Taddy to stand at the podium to administer the oath to Mrs. Jenkins. Mrs. Taddy, if you want to find your way to the podium. Mrs. Jenkins, we have the microphone approximately six feet away for you to stand and repeat your oath, and we welcome your family members to come and join you as you prepare to take the oath and stand with you if you would like. Yep, this microphone right here. Okay, Mrs. Taddy?
Okay. I, Jennifer Jenkins, do solemnly affirm-
I, Jennifer Jenkins, do solemnly affirm-
-that I will support, protect, and defend-
That I will support, protect, and defend-
-the Constitution and government of the United States-
The Constitution and government of the United States-
And of the state of Florida-
And of the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office-
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state-
Under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well and faithfully-
And that I will well and faithfully-
-perform the duties of school board member-
Perform the duties of school board member.
On which I am about to enter.
Of which I am about to enter.
Good job. Mrs. Jenkins, if you want to stay and take the opportunity to say a few words, you are welcome to.
I'm gonna grab mine.
Okay.
Not gonna pretend that I memorized this. I just, I want to take the opportunity to recognize some really important people to me tonight. My father, a strict law enforcement officer, instilled in me since I was a little girl to always use my voice and to advocate for myself and others, never letting anyone define who I am or what I believe. My mother, frustrated by her life being redirected by her disability, reinforced conviction and independence to go after the things in life that could one day be out of reach. Mom and dad, thank you for raising me with the resiliency that led me here today. To my husband Sam, thank you for continuously supporting me to grow as a mother, a wife, an individual, and as a professional, and always standing by my side. And to my sweet Olive, I hope mommy has taught you to grow, to be proud, confident, determined, and not just a firecracker, but a dynamite. And to my colleagues, I will honor your service to our community with an unwavering integrity and responsibility. I have already been blessed with the opportunity to serve the students of Brevard amongst the most experienced professionals in the state, and I am so very grateful to continue to serve a new chapter as a member of this board. Thank you.
And Judge Crawford, will you please come to the podium to administer the oath of office to Mr. Susan? Mr. Susan, please go there and have your family join you if you would like.
It's half the audience, sorry. It's nice to see everyone. At the courthouse, we have the, for y'all old enough, the cone of silence with the Plexiglas. Remember that from Get Smart? Everybody's covered up with Plexiglas. It's nice to see you. You can see everybody. I'm gonna steal this. Go ahead.
I've got a cowboy there.
Also see a lot of familiar faces. Last time I was here, Ms. Taddy was helping us get lacrosse in Brevard Public Schools. Dr. Taddy was helping us, so it's nice to see everybody. All right, cowboy, you ready?
I'm almost there. A little coordination. Hold it up and hold it tight.
You can't sing now, you just get to say the oath. (laughing). I, Matthew Susan-
I, Matthew Susan.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend-
That I will support, protect, and defend-
-the Constitution and government of the United States-
The Constitution of government, United-
And of the state of Florida-
And of the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold-
That I am duly qualified to hold.
Office under the Constitution of the state-
Office under the Constitution of the state.
And I will well and faithfully perform the duties-
And I will well and faithfully perform the duties.
A Brevard County School Board Member, District Four-
A Brevard County School Board Member, District Four.
On which I am now about to enter, so help me God.
On which I am now about to enter, so help me God.
She is the youngest school board member to ever be elected, and her energy on this board is going to be tremendous to assist it to do some amazing things. And I look forward to working with you and to the future that we have together for at
Mr. Susan, would you like to say a few words?
least the next four years before we may go a different ways.
Yeah, I do.
But I did want to say, this is my, my kids.
I'd like to take a picture. Mike, can you take a picture?
Anyways, the bottom line is this, 15 years ago, I became an employee.
He's back there.
I'll hold it.
I'll do it.
15 years ago, I was a teacher, and I came across, and I remember one moment, when I
Mr. Francisco, are you back there behind the curtain?
came as a teacher, I walked into the first day of school, and I remember having the door closed behind me, the bell rang, and all the kids started to come. And I was so freaked out because I didn't know. I didn't know what to do, so I called my dad, and I said, "Dad, we're about to start a new career. I'm really nervous. These kids are gonna eat me alive." He said, "Always do what's best for the kids, always, no matter what. Every decision you make, make it for the kids." And I've done that from the beginning, and I've done that for this district, and I'll continue to do that for the next four years. And then I'm honored to be a part of it, and honored to serve for everybody in this room in my district four. Thank you.
I would like to take this opportunity to thank again-
Judge Crawford, you guys?
Yeah, that's all right.
Judge Crawford's an old friend. We coached lacrosse against each other, and he's amazing. He is the epitome of when you're a competitor, and has given his heart and soul to our lacrosse program, which has done so many great things for our school district. He has not only come and started the program, but just this, just this month, he decided to take over Rockledge High School's program because they didn't have a coach, and he doesn't want to let that spirit die. So I wanted to say thank you for everything you've done. Thanks for coming here, Judge. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, that was a good lead-in, because I was gonna take the opportunity to thank both individuals who came to recognize and honor and help with the swearing-in of our new board members. Ms. Joan Taddy served Brevard Public School's students for over 41 years across several different schools. He retired twice, where did she go? There you are, Joan. Retired twice, failed retirement the first time. John Tuttle successfully wooed you back to Heritage High School to help open that school, and you've certainly left a legacy across so many areas of our, of our school district, none the least of which is our performing art theater programs. Thank you for your many, many years of service, your probably tens of thousands of young lives that you've positively impacted over the years, and being a part of tonight's celebration and recognition. So we appreciate you, your years of service to Brevard, and your husband for being, there you go, the, the strength behind you when inevitably the going got tough. So thank you both for being here tonight and being great champions for Brevard's kids.
Thank you so much.
And, and Judge Crawford as well. Not only my professional thanks this evening for raising the honor of tonight's recognition ceremonies and the swearing-in of board members, but personally, as a dad, the recognition tonight that you helped launch lacrosse in Brevard. Two of my own children are benefactors of your, your love and passion for lacrosse. As my son was on the first Melbourne High lacrosse team, my daughter played lacrosse for four years for Mel High and is in her senior year in college playing lacrosse on a scholarship, but also helping my son be part of launching lacrosse at Eastern Florida State College with a club program, just a true testament not only of your great public service to our community as judge, but also as a man mentoring young men and women in, through sports and certainly through lacrosse. So thank you for being here tonight and being a pillar in our community. We appreciate you. So now we will move on to the, the rest of the meeting, and at this time, we will hold a, a moment of silence, a silent reflection, and invite the viewing audience to join. Thank you. And now, if you would please join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That brings us to the organization of the board. First, we need to elect a chairman for this coming year, at which time the person elected will assume the responsibility as chair. The board will then elect other officers and appoint individuals to committees where board representation is required or expected.
Good evening, board members. We follow Robert's Rules of Order and pursuant to Robert's Rules of Order for the election of chairman of the board. The presiding official will be the superintendent who will call for nomination. Any board member who wishes to make a nomination should call out. The first person to call out will be number one to make a nomination. I will assist the superintendent in determining who is the first nominator. The superintendent will then call for nomination by that person and go down to the second and then the third and so on. We'll go back to the first person, the first nomination, and vote on that nominee. The nominee that gets the majority vote, three vote, will be the chairman. If that person is the first nominee, that will end the process. If the first nominee does not get three votes, we will go to the second and so forth. The nominations do not need to be seconded under Robert's Rules of Order. I would be happy to answer any questions before we get started.
Before we move on to the, the nomination, Ms. Escobar reminded me I had to take roll, so I messed up my first responsibility as board chair for the moment. So I will take roll call now. Ms. Katie Campbell?
Here.
Ms. Jennifer Jenkins? Ms. Cheryl McDougal?
Present.
Mrs. Misty Belford? Mr. Matthew Susan?
Present.
All right, Mr. Gibbs will observe and inform me which board member makes the first nomination, as I may have trouble distinguishing simultaneous voices. At this time, the floor, the floor is now open to nominations for chairman.
I'd like to make a nomination.
Ms. McDougal?
I'd like to nominate Misty Belford for another term if she is interested.
Are there any other nominations at this time? I'll ask for a motion to close the nominations.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Campbell? Second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Belford. At this time, I'll take a vote for the nomination. All board, all members of the board in support of Ms. Misty Belford's nomination as chairman of the board, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Congratulations, Mrs. Belford. And at this time, I think we take a short recess. Ms. Escobar, Mr. Gibbs, do we need a recess?
If everybody's staying where they are right now, then I don't think we need a recess.
We don't.
Okay.
At this time, I will open the floor to nominations for vice chairman. I'll throw a nomination then. I would nominate Ms. Katie Campbell. Any other nominations? And we need a motion for nominations to be closed. So moved. There ain't no second, Mr. Gibbs. What would you like for me to do?
We need a nomination or a second to close it, so.
All right.
Does there anybody have another nomination they want to put forward?
I'll nominate, um, Mr. Susan.
All right, and I will entertain, entertain a motion for nominations to be closed. Uh, I have a wave from Ms. Campbell and a wave from Ms. McDougal. So clarification, Mr. Gibbs, does that mean that both names are still up for nomination?
Yes, both names are up for nomination.
Okay, so it was moved by Ms. Campbell and seconded by Ms. McDougal. So all members of the board in support of Ms. Campbell's nomination as vice chair of the board, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed?
Did you say aye or nay?
Aye is fine. May something? Okay, so that nomination fails, which brings us to all members of the board in support of Mr. Susan's nomination as vice chair of the board. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye, I guess, since I voted on the first one, not truly opposed, Matt, but. All right, so that motion passes, and congratulations, Mr. Susan. You are once again vice chair. All right, the next item on the agenda is to designate the date, time, and place of regular and special monthly meetings, with exceptions, Dr. Mullins.
It is my recommend, it is my recommendation to the board to adopt the dates, times, and places for these meetings as listed on the attached meeting date schedule.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second. Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. McDougal. Is there any discussion? All right, please vote. Oh.
If you want to be voiced vote, involve-
Yep, absolutely. Ms. Perch, if you could assist with the technical issue, and Ms. Escobar, if you could record a voice vote for us. All in favor on said motion?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion passes five zero.
Can we take a second?
Yep, absolutely. We're gonna take a, a brief moment to address our technical issues and allow those who, who wish to leave to do so, and then we will reconvene. We do have a time certain, so I am going to call a recess now so that we can convene to the Leasing Corporation meeting, which is a time certain meeting. So recess of organizational meeting. The Leasing Corporation meeting is now called to order. Dr. Mullins?
You got ahead of me, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
The bylaws of the Leasing Corporation require an annual meeting for the purpose of electing a president, vice president, secretary, and treasurer. The purpose is to elect the following officials of the Brevard County School Board Leasing Corporation. President, Chairman of the School Board, Ms. Misty Belford. Vice President, Vice Chairman of the School Board, Mr. Matthew Susan. Secretary, Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Mark Mullins. And Treasurer, Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Cindy Lysinski.
All right, board, I need a voice vote on this. What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. McDougal. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes five zero. There being no further business, the Leasing Corporation meeting is now adjourned, and the organizational meeting is back in session. All right, next we need to appoint board representatives to various committees for the upcoming year. Many of these, we need to, I think almost all of them, we need to identify primaries as well as alternates. First one on the list is League of Cities. Ms. Duskovich was the previous appointee with alternate Katie Campbell. Is anyone, Mr. Susan, you want to be lead on that one?
I'll be lead.
Okay, Mr. Susan. Ms. Campbell, did you still want to be backup on League?
I can.
Okay. Second one is Brevard County Values Adjustment Board. Mr. Susan, you were primary on that with Ms. McDougal as alternate. Do you want to keep?
You know what, I owe them another year being the fact that Cheryl-
You sure you don't want me to take?
No, Cheryl.
It's really-
It was a piece of cake. Do you remember the other person that used to play about it all the time?
I know. I do.
I'll, I'll take it, and if we're, if we're doling out like only a certain number, but I feel obligated because I-
Okay. I'll be your back.
All right, there we go.
All right, so Mr. Susan maintains primary, and Ms. McDougal alternate on that. FSBA legislatively liaison, I am primary on that, and Katie is my alternate? I thought you were my alternate, Matt. Were you not? Oh.
He can be.
But we, they've got a different setup now, right?
Yes, so-
So why don't you give us some insight into that, because there's like no opportunity for those to be your backup.
Um, so yeah, so what happened with the FSBA, FSBA committees? Previously, the legislative committee was the main committee, and then the- Committee was the main committee, and then there was a Federal Relations Subcommittee and an Advocacy Subcommittee, and they have actually changed the way that they're doing that to make Advocacy the primary committee and Legislative and Federal the subcommittees. So they actually appointed the people to the Federal and the Legislative Committees based on who was appointed to the Advocacy Committee, so I am technically the appointee for the Legislative Committee, but I think it would probably be good to have someone just in case I can't participate, who could at least be there and get the information and that sort of thing, but that Legislative Committee is now a Subcommittee of the Advocacy Committee, if that makes sense to you all. So the committee appointees were chosen for Legislative and Federal Relations by FSBA, I think they're. So Katie or Matt?
I don't have a preference.
I'm going to be pushing a lot, hard to talk, so I'm going to be up there a lot, but it's, like, I'm going to be on a solo, single mission on a couple of issues.
Okay.
So I think that it would be better to give our people some more spots there, because in the FSBA leadership, what it is, is that, I'm sorry, in the FSBA leadership, the more people we have showing up in face would be better, so I think, I truly believe, I'm going to be there, but I think that one of you guys would be better off being the alternate.
Okay, so Katie, you good being my backup on that?
Yes, so are you saying that five and six, we don't need to have those then?
Correct.
Okay, because three, five, and six are kind of all one?
Yes.
Okay, Cam, catch all that?
Um, FSBA Board of Directors, Mr. Susan, you're currently lead on that?
I think, I think we should, we should do, I think Ms. Campbell would be good, or Ms. McDougall, with Ms. Jenkins being the backup there, and that's how I feel. I don't, I think, I've been on the Board of Directors for two years, and I've worked very closely with the president, vice president, everybody currently, so I think that this gives us an opportunity to have more people in their face and represent, so I would be honored to have one of you guys take that.
You want to give us an idea of when they usually?
So they meet like twice a year, right, and they meet a couple of times throughout on a lot of the bylaws and stuff like that, but what it does is, there were some contentious votes that I swung in that Board of Directors the last time, so it's a good opportunity to be in there. So you do set policy for the Florida School Board Association, you vote on everything, so the Advocacy Committee's legislative agenda will be voted on by you guys, it also gives you an opportunity to kind of see the inner workings for future leadership.
And you develop the officers' platform and.
Okay, I would be happy to do that.
Ms. McDougall, do you?
I'm okay with that.
You're okay with me?
Okay, so Ms. Campbell's going to be primary on that one, do you, Ms. McDougall, want to take alternate on that, or do you, would, Ms. Jenkins, would you like to be alternate on that?
I mean, that's fine, I, obviously, I'm not well versed in what these are and what's going to be required of me, and obviously, being a new member of the Florida School Board Association, but if you think that's something that is okay for me to fill at this point, I have no problem doing that.
I almost believe that, like, we should go through the year, where, when I was doing it, I said, you know what, it would be nice if the alternate got to do it, so if you did take it, look, it's not, it's not, you know, you'll pick it up within 10 seconds. I think that if you guys double teamed it, I think that that would be great, and there's an opportunity also for people to sit in the, inside the meetings when they do it in the back, and I think that'd be great, too. I think you'd be good there.
So Ms. Jenkins, are you good to be Ms. Campbell's backup?
Yes.
Five and six are taken care of with the Advocacy Committee, Brevard Cultural Alliance, Ms. McDougall, you are currently primary?
Yeah, I'd like to give that up.
All right, Ms. Campbell, you're currently secondary on that, do you have a desire to take primary?
No, I've got a couple other things I'd kind of like to stay with.
I'll take primary on that.
All right, Ms. Jenkins, is going to be primary on VCA, and anyone want to be alternate for her?
I can be your alternate.
Okay, Ms. McDougall will be backup. Central Florida Public School Boards Coalition, I am currently appointed to that with Matt being my alternate, I think we typically have done that as board chair, fine continuing unless you all have some concern, I mean, the meetings are open to everyone, so it's not like you all can't attend, they're publicly notice meetings, so there's no issue with multiple board members being there. So I'm, I'm fine with keeping that, if you guys are good with that, and Matt, are you good being my backup?
Absolutely.
Okay. Brevard Schools Foundation, Ms. McDougall, you are currently primary?
I am, I, it's been, I could keep it, but I want to know if anybody else is interested in that, because that's something I've had for two years, and somebody else can have a shot at that, so.
I'm good.
I think that's only fair, it's a great organization, it's just.
I would love the opportunity, but.
Go for it. That's okay.
Ms. Campbell, were you, did you say you're good, like, you're?
I'm good, like, whatever y'all want to do.
All right, so Ms. Jenkins, you're going to be primary on Schools Foundation, and who would like to be her backup?
Oh, I can be.
All right, Ms. McDougall's going to be secondary on that. All right, now we're getting into some that don't have alternates necessarily, Choice Charter School Liaison, Ms. Campbell, that's currently you?
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm happy to keep it, most of the charter schools are within District Five anyway, but if someone else really feels passionate about it, they can certainly.
Anybody want to fight her for it? All right, you got it, Ms. Campbell. Capital Outlay Committee, Mr. Susan, you are currently the appointee there?
Yeah, it fits.
Keep that? Okay, everybody good with that?
Yep.
SIAC Committee, Ms. Campbell, you are currently primary on that?
Yes.
That one's a heavy lift, do you want to keep that?
I, I'd like to keep it, I just feel like in a year, it's kind of hard to dive in all the way, because it's a lot to digest.
Yeah, absolutely, okay, and who would like to be secondary for Ms. Campbell on SIAC, Mr. Susan? School Health and Safety, Ms. McDougall?
I would like to keep that one.
Okay, everybody good with Ms. McDougall keeping that? Perfect, Pompe Youth Advisory Board, Ms. Campbell?
Yep, and Ms. Jenkins, if you want to alternate since that, your district, I can tell you more about that, some of those fall within your district.
Okay, and AMI Kids, I actually spoke with their representative this morning, and they have asked that I join their board as the district representative, I told them I would be happy to do so if you all were comfortable with that.
Well, darn, I really would have liked that one, only because it's a great organization, and I've heard that, so.
Okay.
That's, I mean, I get it if they want you, that's fine.
Well, I'm not sure why exactly they reached out to me, but I would be happy to make a recommendation that you be the appointee if you would like me to do so.
Okay.
Okay. I will reach out to them tomorrow then, Cheryl, and let them know that was.
And if they have a real hard time with it, that's fine, you can.
I'm sure they won't, I'm sure they won't, everybody good with that? Okay.
I missed, I missed one, who's doing League of Cities, the main?
Uh, Matt.
Okay.
And you are alternate.
Got it.
And anybody can attend, it's not a, we're just technically the member, but, and we're not really technically even members.
Right, thank you.
It's kind of like, but not really.
Everybody good on all those? Ms. Escobar, you good? All right, that brings us to board authorization, Dr. Mullins.
It is the requirement to authorize the superintendent to have signature facsimiles made of the chairman and superintendent to be used for signing checks, and also to approve the continued use of the current signatures facsimiles for district checks until new facsimiles are received. A motion and vote of the board is required for this issue.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Ms. Campbell, that was you, right?
Yep.
Moved by Ms. Campbell, seconded by Mr. Susan, is there any discussion? Please vote. I'm still back on the calendar for some reason on mine. Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and take a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. All right, before I move further, or before we move further, I would like to offer my fellow board members and Dr. Mullins the opportunity to recognize staff, students, or community members, who would like to start us off?
I mean, I can if no one else does.
All right, Ms. McDougall.
Thank you, I want to give a shout out to, and I think if many of us know, the finalists for our Teacher and Employee of the Year, and I have several in my district, I have at Gulfview, Samuel Tazwell, who is the tech support, and when Dr. Mullins and I were visiting, everybody who came to talk to us sang his praises, they just thought he was wonderful, so congratulations to Sam, and then also Cocoa Beach, the secretary, oh, I'm probably going to mess up Lisa's name, she's the school secretary who's nominated as the finalist for Employee of the Year, and it's Lisa Peliquin, I hope I'm saying that right, and then at Cocoa High School, we have two people who were nominated, Katie Hyber, an English teacher for Teacher of the Year, and then Vanessa Keys, Office Clerk, Employee of the Year finalist, so congratulations, and I can let everybody else sing their praises of their own staff unless you don't have it, and I have the whole list here, so I want to give a shout out to those people. Also, I want to give a shout out to the city of Cocoa for at the last game where the Tigers beat Rockledge, the, they donated a check for $85,000 to go towards the Cocoa High Schools rubberized track, so we're getting closer, so I want to thank the city of Cocoa for doing that, and again, I just want to say that, you know, the Tigers beat the Raiders, and I know next month, Mr. Susan will be wearing something that will represent the Tigers.
I'm going to wear a mascot head just for fun, so you guys know, because I go big or go home, right, so we'll have an interesting dais meeting, all right, and I appreciate that competition, and I, we'll keep going, you know, maybe we have to play the fight song before each one of our speeches the next year, and then we'll just keep adding stuff, all right?
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. McDougall, and Ms. Campbell?
All right, well, along the lines of what Ms. McDougall was sharing, I'd like to congratulate Jennifer Zephyr, who is also a Teacher of the Year finalist from Central Middle School, she's our avid coordinator, and she's pretty amazing. About a month or so ago, I went to luncheon, and there was a group that was a special guest from Step Up America, and I'd never heard of them, they're actually out of Vera Beach, and they come into schools, they're nonprofit, they come into schools, and they teach about Constitution and civics and our founding fathers, and just tons of great information, they come in for free, they raise all their funds outside, and so they offer this as free to the school, they're offering it all around the state, and I was like, wow, we should do that in Brevard, and somebody said, are you doing that in Brevard, and they said, yes, we're already here, so they actually have already been to, I want to say, six or seven of our elementary schools, they have Ben Franklin come in and do a virtual thing, where he doesn't just talk at the kids, they actually have someone, I don't know how they do it, through the mystery of technology, offsite, where the kids, you can imagine a little first or second grader walking up and talking to Benjamin Franklin on the screen and asking them, asking him anything, like, what's your favorite vegetable, or why did you put the kite up in the air, or whatever, and a person answers back, so, and he says, oh, hey, you in the red shirt, so like, he can see the kid, and so they get all excited because they can see me, so just really excited to have groups like that coming into our schools, and like I said, they come in for free and support, and they're even doing it through the pandemic, even though we're not allowing visitors, they're finding ways to still have their programs come into the classrooms, all around the state and around the nation. Somebody else maybe say, going to talk about this, but I just wanted to thank the community, since this is our first board meeting since we, since the election, for passing with such a huge show of support, the half cent sales surtax, and it was exciting to see that large number of our community realizing the needs and the accountability, and I feel like it's a, it's a word of trust to our staff for the way that they have taken care of that over the next, last six years, and it's that the community recognizes the need for the next year, so I did want to say to the 109,408 people who voted no, please watch over the next six years and see what we're doing, and if you want to come see it up close, just ask us, we want, we want you, man, we want you to see what's happening to the half penny on every dollar that we're collecting, and know that we are going to be held accountable, so we appreciate you as well, and we want to make sure that, that we don't disappoint, so I think we're, I think we're really excited to see this project, I know I shared on my Facebook page, the first year one projects, and everybody, you know, was pretty excited to see some of the things that are going to be done here in 2021, so thank you, community.
Mr. Susan? Oh, Ms. Jenkins, I'm sorry.
Did you?
Did you have recognitions?
Yeah, actually, I do, I, obviously, I'm a little bit different here, my last day as an employee with Brevard Public Schools was actually yesterday, so I took a couple of days off and had the privilege of meeting almost, I think, every single one of our cabinet members, so I just want to say a special shout out and thank you to every single one of them, they were so kind and welcoming, so knowledgeable, I really appreciate you, and a special shout out to Russell, I had a geek out moment with him, I got to go see the server room, it was super fun, little, little tech moment, and I really enjoyed it, and everyone, thank you so much for being so kind, and I, I look forward to working with all of you, and I feel confident that I can lean on all of you for, for some support, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Susan?
Thank you, had two things that I wanted to touch base on, the first one is centered around, all of them are centered around Cocoa, and the second one is, is I wanted to say congratulations to Ms. Jolly for what she's got, but the track at Cocoa is just like the track at our other school, and we know Rockledge, we know Cocoa, we know, just to emphasize to the fellow board members, the need for some of this, is that our kids go to other schools in other counties, and they play on tracks that are better than what we have, and I think that we should do everything we have possible to push for that, to get those tracks in, I know that we're doing a great job to get the foundation first, but I think we need to push really hard to finish these off, we've got Rockledge, that's been the Cape Coast Conference Champions for how many years, and they've never had a workable track to run on, you know, that's, we, we can do better than that, so I think we're doing it, and I think we're getting there, but when you talked about that track, Cocoa needs a lot of help, just like Rockledge, and we need to help them, I'm going to go challenge the city council, both at Rockledge and at Cocoa, to divide up and create a fundraising committee, and then finish it off, and then what we're going to do is, is pull the businesses and everybody else in, because that's, that's your city pride, when you have kids that are going out and winning state championships, and a good track team brings good athletes that bring, that feed your other programs, too, so just something to remember, that this is something that we should, we should push. Now, the other thing, our teams are getting ready to go to the Florida High School Athletic Association playoffs, and once again, we're getting ready to go in, and once again, the Florida High School Athletic Association has a requirement that everybody pays $500 to use their platform, now, I'll tell you what that means, that means that little Viera Voice, if they were covering Viera, that means that some of the programs that are out there, they, they can't go do what they normally do, and at a time of a pandemic, I find that it's difficult for them to take our, our people and charge them, but what's worse is that last year, when I went to Bowls, and Cocoa was there, they didn't even have a workable platform for our kids, so just so you understand, the people that don't may not know, is that Florida High School Athletic Association charges these guys $500 to be there, because they say that you can do yours, but we have our platform that's supposed to do it, too, and then our parents, that are in our low income areas, are supposed to pay to watch their kids on that platform, but the platform doesn't even work, on top of that, when you go to the game, you want to buy a shirt that says Cocoa versus Bowls, I was excited, not only did they not allow you to bring your own stuff to sell, but when you go to actually buy there, they don't have any vending machines to do it, so they're, what is it, cutting your nose off to spite your face, and so what ends up happening is, is our students are not given the right opportunity to be viewed by their people, and to also, to have the products that they have, and let me tell you something, they're cutting down the percentages of the amount of people that go, so right now, there's going to be a big desire to get on that platform, and it hasn't worked in every time, so there's a, you're rolling the dice, and that's the kids only, I mean, these kids go play in these programs, that's their highlight of their lives, and it's taken away, and there's parents that can't go to the game now because there's restrictions on the amount of attendance, so I emailed the executive director, asking him to reevaluate the opportunity to have our people do it, I didn't do it with board direction, I'm doing it on my own, but I'd appreciate it if there was any support from you guys, I'm just asking for this year, for them to suspend that, and then I want them to peel back and look at it again for next year, because the amount of money that they get is dismal, it's not worth it, and I think that what we, our goal should be to honor the kids that are playing, not restrict that viewership, so that's all, so I was just letting you guys know that I'm sending that out. Now, last piece, I'm going to try not to swear for the swear cup right now, but. Can do that, they just get mad. Cocoa had all of their stuff stolen this week, so maybe people don't know, but Cocoa High School had their generators, their headphones, everything for their football team stolen, about $15,000 worth of stuff in the middle of a, middle of a playoff, so you, so some. and their program and stole all that stuff, to a Title I school in the middle of the playoffs. And I can't tell you how angry I am at that. So I'm gonna go ask, and if anybody's out there that watches this, if anybody would like to help Cocoa out, because they can't make up $15,000, especially by Friday, and that program can't make up $15,000 by the time next season starts. They're calling around trying to get anybody to give them headphones, and they'll probably get a team to give them to them. But dad gumming, I don't know if you guys know anything about, about coaching, but if you don't have your headphones, it sucks. And you get to a place, and you're trying to do the reverb on everything, and you don't have the right programming, they stole their generator for crying out loud? This is BS, you know? What kind of a lowlife does that? So it, it, one is, is just harassing, you know, say something nasty about the individual that thinks that that's appropriate. But then the other thing is, is that we need help for Cocoa. So if there's anybody out there, they need these headsets, and then we need to help them out with that track. Because that program just got, took a big hit when they got that stolen from them. All right. That's it for that. And then Ms. Jolly, where are you at? So I'm a former American history teacher, and it's an honor to have you win this award. This is beyond a great recognition. I see Ms. Garten back there, who is an amazing person, and I just wanted to say from the bottom of my heart, I don't know if we're gonna be doing the other stuff, that you, congratulations for what you do. You're welcome. And that's all. Bellford.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Dr. Mullins?
Thank you, Ms. Bellford. I too would like to take the first opportunity, or second opportunity, to thank our community for their overwhelming support of the renewal of the half-cent sales tax on November 3rd. Just a strong demonstration of our community's support and, and coming alongside us to provide the quality buildings and facilities and security and technology that we have come to ultimately expect for our kids and our staff. So want to thank, from the bottom of my heart, to our community for their, their showing of support on November 3rd for the renewal of the half-cent sales tax. But I would be terribly remiss if I didn't also take the, this opportunity to publicly recognize the leadership behind the administration of the first six years of the sales tax. Because we had a, as Ms. Campbell said, a very strong and confident story to tell our community going into the request to renew the half-cent sales tax. And that shout out goes to Ms. Su Han and her team, who for the last six years have, with, with great diligence and vigilance and commitment and pride, administered and committed to our accountability to our community in expending the dollars in a responsible way, and expend the dollars in a completely transparent way, to, evident by our independent citizens oversight committee, consistently and annually endorsing the work that was being done, as well as validated through third-party audits that confirmed that we were spending the dollars as we had demonstrated our community that we would six years ago. So Ms. Han, on behalf of the children and the staff of Brevard Public Schools, thank you for your leadership for the last six years. You set Brevard up for a great story, to be able to tell our community and reassure them that we invested, that they made a wise investment in our schools, and I know you're committed to the same as we move forward. So thank you for all of your great leadership and work to, to make that possible. Second, I would like to give a shout out, we have some state champions across our schools that I, I think is worthy to recognize. One, our Satellite High School boys 2A cross-country team are state champions. So congratulations. Those, those athletes are Joshua Stern, Gabriel Montague, Justin Wilson, and Joseph Webster. And certainly thanks and congratulations to Coach Doug Butler for his, his coaching and dedication to the cross-country program at Satellite. And second, we have boys bowling state champions from Astronaut High School. So congratulations to our Royal Eagles for being state champions in bowling. And also want to recognize the coach at Astronaut for the bowling team, who was named the Florida State Boys Bowling Coach of the Year. So congratulations to Coach Dexter Deese for that recognition as a State of Florida Coach of the Year. And also want to give congratulations to Rockledge High School's Girls Bowling State Runner-Up. They were competing right there to the bitter end as well, and they are our state, state runners-up. And Mr. Susan already alluded to, this Friday, we have five high schools that are continuing to compete in postseason state playoff football competition. Bayside High School, Cocoa High, O'Gally High School, Rockledge, and Viera High Schools will be competing this Friday. I believe we have, I can see two or three games at home this Friday, so there's some great competition here in Brevard to take advantage of. Call your school of interest quickly to get a ticket, because seats are limited. So congratulations and go Brevard Football Team.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. All right, I have a couple. I'll try to be quick. I will echo the sentiments on our sales tax, so that you all don't have to, to listen through, through that for a third time. But thank you to our community and to all of those who helped us to educate the community over the many months. Also want to give a shout out to Seapark Elementary, who every year does the most phenomenal Veterans Day celebration. And this year, because of restrictions of people coming into schools, they did it online, virtually. And hopefully you got to see some of that, which was covered on our district Facebook page. But they just always do such an amazing job with their program, and the kids do art, and they sing songs, and they, it just, it really is a very moving program. And so many thanks to those at Seapark that put so many hours into making sure that that's a great program every year. Also want to recognize some of our Employee of the Year and Teacher of the Year finalists. Christopher Bainbridge, social studies teacher at Titusville High School. That was a fun one. Dr. Sullivan and I went in, and I don't remember what the comment was, but he was like, no, 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 I gotta get back to teaching. Like, you guys get out of my classroom. This is, this is my instructional time, and you're interrupting. Very respectfully, but you could tell that he is passionate about making sure that he's teaching his students as effectively as possible. Billy Dieters, who's a custodian at Astronaut High School. And that was another fun one. Billy is hearing impaired, and so he, Dr. Sullivan was talking to him, and she was unaware, and his peers were like, you gotta, you gotta take your mask off so I can read your lips. And it took him a minute for him to understand what was going on, but he was so incredibly excited for that recognition. Deputy Vicki Sumlin, who is our SRO at Fair Glenn. I love to see that our SROs and our campus safety specialists are being included in those Employee of the Year and Teacher of the Year recognitions. I think it speaks to how incredibly important they are to, to the students that they serve. And Deputy Sumlin has only been an SRO for two years. She had many other duties within the Brevard County Sheriff's Office, but you could just tell every word that came out of her mouth, just the pride that she was exuding and the work that she does at her schools, and her level of understanding of the impact that she has on students who are oftentimes high need and facing many, many challenges. So thank you to Deputy Vicki Sumlin, and congratulations. And then the last one out of my district is Mr. Brent Poole, who is currently a physical education teacher at Challenger Elementary, Challenger 7. Interestingly enough, he stepped into that role. He was previously a sixth-grade teacher, phenomenal classroom teacher, but through some occurrences, there was a gap there that needed to be filled, and Mr. Poole stepped in to fill that gap for the PE teacher there, and is just doing a phenomenal job, and just amazing energy that he exudes. You can certainly see why he came in being a finalist. So congratulations to all of our Employee of the Year and Teacher of the Year finalists, and we look forward to seeing all of them as this progresses. And then I'm gonna take a quick detour, just because I don't want to forget to get back to it. Mr. Susan, I may have heard incorrectly, but are you requesting individual board members to reach out to FHSAA, or would you like a letter from the board as a whole?
I don't, I don't know where my role is here, you know? I don't want to step out. I would love the support of the board for our kids. I would love that, but I didn't want to, you know, get you guys to say no, and then I try to go make a fight with the FHSAA, and he says, your own board doesn't support you. So that's what I didn't want. So if I can get some nods real quick, I'll make a motion. Okay, all right, yeah, I would really like a letter from you guys in support to try to do that. And, and it's not, look, it, it, normal, it's an argument, but COVID, come on, man. You know what I mean? And these are families that can't afford it, so.
So could you work with Mr. Gibbs to draft an appropriate message, and then I can send it on behalf of the entire board?
You want my words on there?
No, I want Mr. Gibbs. I want Mr. Gibbs's words on there. I just want to make sure that you can provide the context behind it.
Thank you. Yes, yes. Sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs, and thank you, Mr. Susan. All right, that is going to bring us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Mullins?
Chairman and members of the board, on the published agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, one recognition, 17 consent items, two action items, and eight information items. Changes made to the agenda since it was first released to the public are as follows. There were revisions to Item A14 on Administrative Staff Recommendations. Attachments were added to Items F24 on Critical Teacher Shortage Subject Areas for 2021, and to F26 on Florida Education Equity Act Annual Update 2019-2020.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second, moved by Mr. Susan. Seconded by Ms. McDougal. Is there any discussion? Please vote. All right, I'm gonna need to take a voice vote on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the motion passes 5-0. You frozen again, Mr. Susan?
No, it's just not coming up. Okay.
Dr. Mullins, will you please tell us about the administrative staff recommendations on tonight's agenda?
Yes, tonight, there are eight administrative staff personnel for you to consider this evening.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second. Moved by Mr. Susan. Seconded by Ms. Campbell. Is there any discussion? All right, please vote. All right, so I'm gonna take another voice vote on that one. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins, will you please tell us about the recognition item on tonight's agenda?
Yes, well, actually, Mr. Susan gave you a sneak preview. Item B15 is to acknowledge one of our Brevard Public Schools' social studies teachers, who has been named the 2020 Florida History Teacher of the Year by the Gilder-Lehman Institute of American History. Introducing our presenter and award recipient is Dr. Stephanie Sullivan, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Leading and Learning. Dr. Sullivan?
Hi, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we are honoring Ms. Jennifer Jolly, an exemplary social studies educator from Palm Bay Magnet High School, who has been named the 2020 Florida History Teacher of the Year. This is an award presented annually by the Gilder-Lehman Institute of American History, the nation's leading organization dedicated to K-12 American history education. Inaugurated in 2004, the History Teacher of the Year Award highlights the crucial importance of history education by honoring exceptional American history teachers from secondary and elementary schools throughout the nation. The award honors one K-12 teacher from each state. Assisting with the presentation of the award is Kimberly Garten, Secondary Social Studies Resource teacher.
Dr. Mullins, Ms. Bellford, members of the board, and audience members, it is a great honor to stand before you tonight to recognize Ms. Jennifer Jolly as the 2020 Gilder-Lehman Florida History Teacher of the Year. Jennifer Jolly is a national board-certified teacher, who has taught secondary social studies since 1993. She currently teaches at Palm Bay Magnet High School. She is a 2010 James Madison Fellow, a certified Teaching with Primary Sources Library of Congress coach, and an active member of numerous professional organizations and teacher councils. She holds a bachelor's degree from Flagler College in Social Sciences and Philosophy/Religion, and a master's in American History and Government from the Ashbrook Center at Ashland University. Her philosophy in teaching is to uphold the American principles found in the Declaration of Independence, promote civil discourse, exercise student engagement, and foster the ideals of self-government. In addition to a personal honorarium and educational materials sent to Ms. Jolly, she was supposed to be recognized at a national conference event hosted by the Gilder-Lehman Institute. Due to COVID, both this national conference and the State of Florida Social Studies Conference were canceled. So tonight, it is with great pleasure that we get to present her, with flowers, a plaque, and a gift certificate, on behalf of the Gilder-Lehman Institute of American History, and celebrate these honors with her. Dr. Mullins, Ms. Bellford, and Palm Bay Principal, Mr. Kaminsky, would you please join us, socially distanced, of course, for the presentation and a picture?
Anytime. I'm really honored. This is a huge accomplishment.
Congratulations.
Okay, we are now at public comments. The school board policy 0169.1 limits to 30 minutes. A portion of the meeting during which the public is invited to participate and provide public comment. The policy further provides that this time limit may be extended by a vote of the board. We actually only have four, five speakers, four speakers signed up this evening, so there is no need to extend. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. We have a clock in front of me to help you keep track of your time. When your time is over, you will be asked to stop and allow the next speaker his or her turn. Always keep in mind that reasonable decorum is expected at all times, and your statements should be directed to the board chair. The chair may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when time is up, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Should an individual not observe proper etiquette, the chairman may request the individual leave the meeting. Let's all encourage an environment appropriate for our children, who may be present or are watching from home. We'll begin with the first three speakers. Before speaking, please state your name, the organization you represent, if any, and identify the topic you'll be discussing. Our first three are Marino Nardelli, Kyle Savage, and Anthony Calucci. Right here to the mic in the front, please, sir.
My name's Marino Nardelli, and this year, Brevard High School football teams scheduled to play a divisional seven-game schedule that was planned by the district. Only in-county games were scheduled, with no more than 50 students on each team per the FSH, FHSAA recommendations. Along with football, other sports such as soccer, swimming, bowling, and track and basketball will commence this year. Fans are limited. Yet through this reemergence from the COVID cloud, others are being neglected, namely, band and orchestra. A music leadership committee...
Okay, we are now at public comments. The school board policy zero one six nine point one limits to thirty minutes. The portion of the meeting during which the public is invited to participate and provide public comment, the policy further provides that this time limit may be extended by a vote of the board. We actually only have four, five speakers, four speakers signed up this evening. So there is no need to extend. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. We have a clock in front of me to help you keep track of your time. When your time is over, you will be asked to stop and allow the next speaker his or her turn. Always keep in mind that reasonable decorum is expected at all times, and your statements should be directed to the board chair. The chair may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when time is up, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Should an individual not observe proper etiquette, the chairman may request the individual leave the meeting. Let's all encourage an environment appropriate for our children who may be present or watching from home. We'll begin with the first three speakers. Before speaking, please state your name, the organization you represent, if any, and identify the topic you'll be discussing. Our first three are Marino Nardelli, Kyle Savage, and Anthony Calucci. Right here to the mic in the front, please, sir.
My name's Marino Nardelli, and I'm an parent. This year, Brevard High School football teams scheduled to play a divisional seven game schedule that was planned by the district. Only in-county games were scheduled with no more than fifty students on each team per the FSH, F-H-S-A-A recommendations. Along with football, other sports such as soccer, swimming, bowling, and track and basketball will commence this year. Bands are limited. Yet through this reemergence from the COVID cloud, others are being neglected, namely, band and orchestra. A music leadership committee consisting of several music teachers across the county met, collaborated, and came up with a plan for students to participate in in-person all-county music auditions and performances. It consisted of protocols to maintain safe distances, the wearing of masks when appropriate, scheduling students to perform with as little overlap as possible, and limiting audience, audience sizes. This proposal was sent to the BPS School reopening team for approval, and the answer thus far is no. Why can't, why can't football players train, travel, socialize, and play while music is denied? Already, five football teams were playing out of Brevard County. Teams traveled to Pasco, Canilis, and Broward County. This Friday, teams will travel to Bradenton, Jensen Beach, and Estero, all out of county. Why can't athletes, why can athletes meet and compete yet music is told no? Preliminary data from a university-led study on Aristotle dispersal suggests that with sufficient masks and fabric coverings, it's feasible to perform on brass and woodwind instruments. Music plays a big part in high school. Bands even continue to support and come out for football games and support, yes, support their football teams. Allowing sports to gather and compete while music competitions are denied in-person all-county auditions is hypocritical. Can't lick it. I'll quote Mr. Susan from an article from the Space Coast Daily on August twenty-second. "We're excited for our kids to regain some formal normalcy with return to athletics in the fall. The mental health benefits for getting back to play are immensely important during these challenging times. For many of our students, sports are the one thing that gives them the sense of pride and self-worth along with the many life lessons learned through social interaction and working as a team. Music gives kids a sense of pride, self-worth, and life lessons just as much as sports do. Can Brevard be excited about supporting them with their all-county ensembles? Sports prepares our learners for the future. So does music. I implore you to make this right for the benefit of all these kids, not just the athletes."
Thank you, Mr. Nardelli. Mr. Savage?
My name is Kyle Savage. I am the treasurer of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. Thank you, Ms. Belford, members of the board, Ms. Jenkins, Mr. Susan. Congratulations, Mr. Mullins. I come to you tonight as a teacher. Our teachers are stressed. Our teachers are tired. I have no doubt, and I know for a fact, that every single person in this room cares for our teachers. I'm not coming here saying you don't. I know every single staff member behind me cares for these teachers. I know every single director that I talk to almost daily cares, cares for these teachers. But they are stressed. I always hear the word, we always hear the word, grace and flexibility. You know when I never hear the word grace and flexibility? When a teacher made a mistake. You know, I often hear, well, the administrator needs grace and flexibility. And I agree, because you know who else is stressed? Is that assistant principal. That principal is stressed. What we are asking them to do is insane. It is crazy what we are asking our teachers to do right now, what we are asking our schools-based site administrators to do right now. The contact tracing, the e-learning. But every time I've been in a discipline meeting lately, I've never heard the grace and flexibility for our teachers. Our teachers are worn out. Our teachers are stressed. They are making mistakes. I agree. Principals are making mistakes because they are tired. They are stressed. So as we go into the fall and realize, hey, we didn't have our normal days off because they all got moved to the beginning of the year, I ask that we make an extra effort as leaders, and I have to squat, this stinks. As leaders, we make an extra effort to make sure that the teachers know how much you guys care. I know how much you guys care, but I get to interact with you guys on a daily basis. Our teachers won't see that. Our teachers just see the mandates of the state test and of the already diagnostic of how important our tier-three group is and how important it is to work on the lower twenty-five. And I understand that, because somehow, in the middle of the pandemic, the state's gonna do FSA tests and then come out what school grades, as Ms. Campbell talked about last time. But guess what? Our teachers don't care about that today. Our teachers care about getting everybody out the door and everybody accounted for. So I really ask that you make another push to let everybody know that grace and flexibility also applies to our teachers right now. Because they are frustrated. They are tired. I know when Launchpad goes down, it's nobody's fault. I get it. But when Launchpad goes down three times in the last week, I know it's not Mr. Cheatham's fault. I know his team is working as hard as they possibly can. I also geeked out in the same server farm you were in this weekend. But they are tired, and we all need to realize we are in this as a team. So I thank you very much for your time, and I just ask for the same grace and flexibility that everybody else is asking for for our teachers. They are tired. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Savage. Mr. Calucci? After Mr. Calucci, we have Ashley Hall and Annette Shuntig.
My name is Anthony Calucci. I'm the president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. At the last meeting, BFT Second Vice President Jonathan Hilliard requested that this board begin the process of posthumously reinstating Harry T. and Harriet V. Moore as Brevard County teachers. Tonight, I'm requesting, at the December fifteenth board meeting, this board approve a proclamation doing so. Furthermore, I'm asking that as the piece of this proclamation, every year, every fourth-grade class in this district participate in a field trip to the Harry T. and Harriet V. Moore Cultural Complex. It's time for BPS to honor the Moores' legacy by recognizing and correcting the mistakes of the past. Not only were the Moores the first true civil rights activists of the modern era in the state of Florida who organized the first Brevard branch of the NAACP and were instrumental in registering one hundred thousand black voters, they both were well-respected Brevard County educators. In return for their noble work in our community, the Moores were fired from their positions in our school district. Although their personnel records indicate that they resigned on June seventh, nineteen forty-six, historians have shown that shadowy Brevard politicians were responsible for the resignation. Ben Green, author Before His Time, Before His Time notes, "There was no tenure at the time, and the half-page contract the teachers signed gave the school board the discretion to raise or lower salaries, lengthen or shorten the school year, or terminate a contract altogether upon written notice. Or the board could simply not offer a contract for the next year," which was even cleaner. And that is exactly what the school board chose to do as a form of retaliation for the Moores' activism. A quick internet search shows this injustice is still hurting our community, and the action needs to be corrected. And it will be hard for this district to move forward and improve inequities in our district without recognizing what has happened already. We plan on seeing this effort through, and we are working with the board of the Harry T. and Harriet V. Moore Cultural Center. Bill Gary, president of the board, could not be here tonight because of a prior engagement. However, he did send a message for me to share, and I'm gonna read that right now. "As president of the Harry T. and Harriet V. Moore Cultural Complex Board of Directors and past president of the North Brevard Branch of the NAACP, I strongly support this effort to finally set the record straight and give Harry and Harriet Moore the recognition of being faithful and committed teachers of the Brevard County School Board by correcting the record and reinstating them as full and qualified teachers in Brevard County schools, in the Brevard County school system. With the full support of the Florida State Conference of the NAACP Branches President and that of all fifty NAACP branches in the state of Florida, we request the Brevard School Board to take this matter under serious consideration and to be placed on the board agenda to be prepared to hear a formal proposal on this initiative at the December fifteenth meeting. Please let me know, or Mr. Gary, know if you have any questions."
Thank you, Mr. Calucci. Ashley Hall?
Hello, I'm Ashley Hall, parent of first-year student for our school systems. Here to let you guys know, we're still fighting against this mask mandate. I implore you to continue, I continue to implore you to unmask our children. I'm so angry at the complicitness that was displayed in this meeting last month, despite the number of parents that came up here to voice our concerns over these masks on our children. I'm not here to try to convince you, just to let you know we're still here. We're still fighting over this, because it's a trampling of our parental rights. It's clear, it's all about optics. It's, it's very clear about that. It's not about health. So the latest thing I just wanted to bring to your attention, which you all should have seen my email, was the ponchos over the instruments at the Space Coast High, or Junior/Senior High virtual concert. That breaks my heart, personally, to watch children that just want to play instruments go through a sensationalized, irrational, fear-mongering, whatever that was, to drape themselves in plastic. What, where is our common sense? I just feel like it's lost. We're continually just making up rules as we go, continuing to have children not even be able to sing in a classroom without a mask on, or even outside, for that matter. They have to go outside to sing in a mask? It's just, it's not, it's not fair to our kids. There are so many other things we could be doing to mitigate these measures. But the masks, I don't know if you saw the Inside Edition video that they put out, where they tested the masks and came back with adults, this is adults, that probably wear their masks not very regular, not for long periods of time. Millions, hundreds of millions of counts of bacteria on these masks. And we are sending seventy thousand students to school with masks on their face for eight hours a day. Is that mitigation, is that mitigating the spread of bacteria? I can guarantee you it's not. I can guarantee you, if we took samples of every mask on these children, you would be astounded at what is on those masks. And they're bringing, breathing it in, it's going into their respiratory system. Unmask our children.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Annette Shuntig?
Hello, my name's Annette Shuntig, and I work with a company that makes purifiers that will help to combat the problem that we're hearing from our parents who are talking about masks, who we're hearing from our teachers who are talking about the fact that they are worn out. When I look at your mission statement, it says to serve every student with excellence as a standard. This airless purifier will work to take the contaminants out of the air. It puts it through a patented titanium system, and it puts out hydroxyl pathogens that will go and attack the COVID virus, and it will destroy them. I have research here from Florida schools who have used them and shown that the drop in the rate for those students is significant enough for them to be able to buy it and have the parents even raise the money to buy the purifiers so that you can have music areas. You will be able to have your theaters and have these mobile purifiers be able to go into the system, into the school, and be able to attack these pathogens and give the environment that your students are in a clean environment, one that is free of the COVID, that will help them to study, will help the teachers. When you look at the budgets of these school systems, you are spending so much more money on sanitizing, on the janitorial systems of trying to just clean those systems and the surfaces that you have. Not, not anyone will have enough time to be able to clean everything as significantly as we all would want it to be. With this purifier, anywhere you have an air circulation, the SAC system, it will help to take that from wherever you are breathing. And whatever it drops on and it will attack in the air, your surfaces will be COVID-free. So it will help to eliminate on the cost of having to sanitize and clean those areas. Mr. Sisson, you'd said that when you walked into the school on your first day and you said you were afraid and you called your dad, and your dad, as that door closed, he said, "Do what is best for the kids." If you are gonna look at the environment that you're in, look at what is gonna be best for not only the kids, but the teachers, the staff, and everybody who is involved in the school system. Within our board meeting here, be able to combat whatever that issue is. I ask that you take out your phones, that you put in my number that I'll give you right now, which is three two one.
Hold on, ma'am. You are being televised. If you would like to share contact information, I would encourage you to get with Major Lanza over there as opposed to giving the entire world your contact.
But if you wish to contact me, I'll give that information over there so that you can get more information about something that would help every single school in this school district and be able to get them to be able to have a COVID-free environment and try to get us all back to a normal life.
Thank you. We appreciate you joining us this evening. Feel free to share that information over there, okay? Thank you. All right, any board members wish to respond to any of the, or give direction on any of the comments from tonight's speakers? Mr. Susan?
Yeah, Mr. Nardelli, I think, I hope I said it right. Mr. Nardelli, you are a hundred percent right. We brought this issue to Dr. Mullins, and he's working on figuring out something that might be able to work. But I did want to tell you, I didn't want that, because I do have a huge passion for band and orchestra. And sometimes my passion for athletics comes, and people think that that's the avenue, but equally just as much, and you are a hundred percent right. I used to play frisbee football with all the band directors in the county for a couple of years and when I was a teacher, and it's just what you guys do and what they do for our kids is amazing. So thank you for that. Savage, you're right, grace and flexibility, right there with you. Anthony Calucci? I would like to see if the board is willing to do something like that. I mean, I would love to do that. I had some other ideas. We put it for point of discussion at the end of the meeting for that.
I'm, I'm looking at it still. I've got something on there.
I know the history of it. I mean...
It's legal issues that could potentially...
Yeah, I'm looking at the, the posthumous reinstatement issue.
Okay.
But it is, it is being worked on.
But here's the other thing we can do, and let's just put it as a point of discussion at the end, because I would like to discuss the whole Harry T. Moore piece, too. The Cultural Center, I led that when I was a teacher. I was part of the group that took them there. Ms. Hall, I disagree with your, with your, your statement, although I like your passion. You know, she left, but I truly appreciate her passion for coming down here. I just disregard what she says. And then, Ms. Shuntig, there's a process for us to become a vendor in the district. If you'll see Ms. Hahn, and you can go through, and there's a process to become a vendor, and then there's other things to do. We, as board members, can't give direction for that. You would have to go through procurement and all of that stuff. But I didn't want you to think that we wouldn't follow up with you, but there is a process. We wouldn't do that, because we try to keep businesses and us separate. But you can go to Ms. Hahn in the back, and she might be able to help you out over there. Thank you. I'm done.
Thanks. Anyone else?
I would like to say something as well. Mr. Nardelli, it's, it's nice to see you outside of the building. And I want you to know that I am with you a hundred percent. Little fun fact, I was the drum manger of my marching band. So music has a special place in my heart. And I'm not saying, you know, whether or not I feel that all of our students should be gathering outside of school or not, but I wholeheartedly agree with you. If we're doing it for one group of kids, we should be doing it for everybody. And so I'm with you on that. And I would love it if, I don't know who to ask, but if somebody could refresh me on what our students are allowed to do. It sounds like you're kind of updating that as well when it comes to music versus the activities. I would appreciate that very much. And Mr. Savage? Grace and flexibility. I just want all of our educators listening and all of our staff members listening to know, I have that for you. I wholeheartedly understand what you're going through. I am very concerned about the mental health of our, our staff and our teachers. And I'm with you, and we will continue to make it through this year. I have a teacher in my home with me, my husband, and so I, I understand, and I have compassion for you. So thank you for everything that you do.
Thanks, Ms. Jenkins. Anyone else?
All right. Dr. Mullins, I know we don't have an answer yet, but I believe that as far as our all-county, it's, it's a hold-on for right now. Just so the public knows, because there has been that disparity between sports, and you know, I'm, I'm music mom, too, that it's, it is a little different to bring hundreds, what are normal. I think what's known right now, for sure, has been our normal weekend in January. We bring hundreds of students from dozens of schools all together in the same place at the same time. in the same place at the same time. And that decision had to be made last summer when we didn't even know if EFSC was going to allow us, or the King Center was going to allow us, if they were even going to be open for business. So, right now, the word that I've gotten is, is there, it's a, it's a hold-on. They're, they're going to continue to work on it. And, you know, in this world that we're in right now, a few months makes a big difference as for what, as far as what we know and the virus and our response and community. So, I don't know if we have any more updates, Dr. Mullins, than that.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. No, there is no additional update right now other than I would assure the board that Dr. Sullivan, Mrs. Klein, our resource teacher for music are continuing to consider what an alternative option might be. But you are correct, the historic, or the historical or traditional all-county orchestra process that we have, that we have had as a district typically in January, February timeframe is not, is not being pursued at this time. But we haven't completely said no. We're looking at, like so many areas in, across the district, things to look different and may be different moving forward. But we're looking at a potential late spring option for an all-county type of experience. It'll look different inevitably, and obviously is at a different time. But we, we haven't stopped looking at what the potential could be.
And I would just like to say, and echo, actually taking a different take on what Ms. Hall said. I would like to just thank our music teachers for the way they are getting so creative with having performances. Because the weekly football game equivalent for the choir programs and orchestra and band programs is, are the concerts, and our theater programs as well. Because they are just getting, even the video that was referenced, the students, whoever did the video, they had three or four camera angles. They had the e-learning students come into the screen who are participating from home. And I just am so thankful. I know that this, one of the schools where my kids go is going to be doing their performances out in the football stadium so that, you know, we can have as many appearances as, you know, will fit, and, and where they can be outdoors. And so, thank you to our fine arts teachers for getting so creative so that our students have the performance. Because without the performance, there's just not the joy of, one of the reasons why you study music. There's benefits, definitely, but without the performance, it's just not what it is. So I just want to thank our music teachers for the way that they're making this happen for our students.
Ms. Campbell, I would add to that. Our, our performing arts, our theater programs, we've given them the opportunity to problem-solve and troubleshoot and work together to identify a plan, a safety plan, that would allow them to have performances across their programs and in our theaters. And they're working closely with our administrators to find ways, find a way to yes, safely. I, I feel like I'd be remiss if we lose sight of a couple of things. One, safety is our number-one priority. And, Ms. Campbell, you sent out the updated numbers across our community to the board, I think, yesterday or late last week. And we can't deny that numbers are not moving in our favor. And second, when that happens, the demand and the responsibility on our administrators to then contact trace across our schools. There isn't a, there isn't a dad out there that I don't think could, has, has a greater appreciation for our music programs than I do as the dad of three children who all took advantage of our public schools' music programs through their career. But there are, these are challenging and very difficult times in upholding our commitment and our responsibility to safety. But we're trying to do that, we're trying to find alternatives in a safe manner so that we can continue to give our kids the experiences we want them to have. And we're trying to find ways to yes. So we'll continue to do that as we move forward.
All right. Thanks, all. That moves us into the consent agenda, Dr. Mullins.
There are 17 items, excuse me, there are 17 agenda items under this category, one with prior information.
Any board member wish to pull any item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Is there any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 5-0. That brings us to the action agenda, Dr. Mullins.
There are two action items on tonight's agenda. The first item is G34, which is procurement solicitations.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. McDougal. Is there any discussion? Please vote. The motion passes 5-0, Dr. Mullins.
Next is item G35 on department-school initiated agreement.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Is there any discussion? Please vote. The motion passes 5-0. That brings us to the information agenda. The information agenda includes items for board review and will be brought back for action at a subsequent meeting. No action will be taken on these items tonight. Dr. Mullins?
There are eight agenda items under the information category.
Does any board member wish to discuss any items on the information agenda? Okay. We are now at the board member reports and discussion points. Mr. Susan has asked to discuss the board's appetite for a board policy and/or standards, procedure, standard procedures for choosing school mascots. Mr. Susan?
Thank you. So, at the last meeting, we sat back and said, "Okay, what would the process be? What would you like to recommend?" I think we're at the point where I came up with, I guess the, what when I was looking at is, is one, a threshold that we would make that decision based on. What it would be the reason that you would change a mascot, right? And making sure that there's not a steerage. Because sometimes there can be somebody that's inside that school that could steer it towards an area just because they, a popular teacher or anything like that. And then all of a sudden, we have a mascot change and stuff like that. So I would, I would, I would like to consider a policy that has a threshold that needs to be pierced in order to start it. It could be that it's controversial, that it's detrimental to anything that it is, right? Like it's detrimental to education, it's controversial, something like that, a threshold like that. And then have the opportunity for the students, for the faculty and the teacher, or the parents, to vote on it before they move forward with the process. And the reason for that is, is we had a vote recently on the Edgewood one that I think kind of put it into perspective of, do you, does this, is this what's wanted? Is this what's moving forward? Does that make sense to you?
What hasn't had a vote is the next step with the sisters. They will be the SAC committee to look at everything that was gathered and all the input. And they'll decide, they may not decide to vote on, to make a decision at this point. They're going to take their time.
I saw an email that said we voted. The student body voted.
I believe the email that you saw was they had surveyed the student body.
They surveyed the students also. So it's like, they want all the information. They want the students, they want the communities, they want the, I think the one that's telling is the American Indian National Conference that also weighed in. So anyhow, so they're taking all that information and looking at that tomorrow, Thursday, at the SAC meeting. And they may or may not vote then, they may wait until January. I do understand that they, it is, it's hopeful that they will, it's under the impression they will make a decision this school year because this is a group, the SAC committee, has gotten all the information from various sources. So at this point, there is nothing that has been voted on at this point.
Okay, so the survey, what was the survey results that came back? Can anybody speak to that?
We got an email today. I want to say it was like 60, 60% to 30%. Dr. Sullivan's giving me a head nod, so I must be in the neighborhood.
60% against or in favor?
I believe it was 60% against changing the mascot. I'm getting a head nod.
60%, so it's something. So, and, and the reason that I was saying that is, is that if you have a threshold that it needs to be required in order to, to start the process, then a vote, some kind of a process at the beginning, it makes it to where, okay, this can't just be a group of people that are trying to make change, and then you're going to go down this road, and then you're going to find out after community meetings and after all of the different things that we went through this entire process. And it could have been avoided if we would have just had a threshold or a vote at the beginning. Does that make sense? There needs to be a threshold as to why. Somebody can't just say, "I want to change a mascot." There needs to be a process of something that needs to be the why, and then there needs to be a majority of the individuals involved. That's it, if that makes sense. That's what the policy, I'm not saying in any way that this is attributed to the Edgewood piece for that. But what I'm trying to say is, is that our school district keeps getting pulled into all of these different things. And what ends up happening is, is we're in the middle of a pandemic, we're in the middle of all these other issues, and we continue to bring this, this, this energy onto us. And that's fine if the majority of the individuals want to do it, and there's a threshold that's pierced. But if we don't have that, then there's no sense in moving forward. That was all. So I asked to have a policy brought forward or to work on one that includes a threshold, and then a process that involves the community engagement that we currently have for naming schools. And then I would like to see that process to include the parents, the students, and the past presidents of that school to weigh in on what that meant to them as far as a mascot. That's all. That was my feeling, but we keep bringing this up. And I, and I feel that that would be the piece that I would like to add to an already existing school name process to say that this could be a mascot, and I would be willing to only do it for secondary. I think elementary schools just kind of, they change them, they, you know what I mean? But in secondary, you get an official card, you get an official mini diploma, you get, you get all those things. You get them from an elementary school, but it just starts to mean a little bit more once you start playing on the sports teams and stuff like that from the middle and highs. So that's it. So a threshold in so that there would be something that needs to be pierced, along with a majority of parents, staff, and student body. And then that would start the process of the community engagement and everything else. It would end up in a final vote between the two mascots. That's my idea. You shoot it down if you want, or approve it. Move forward with discussion.
I have a concern about having a conversation about a threshold to be met. I'm concerned about how language would be drafted that wouldn't be subjective. Who would be defining whether or not this is something that's offensive or culturally inappropriate? I think that would be a whole nother public discussion that you would be having. Yeah, I just, I don't know. I think, I think that's subjective. I took, I didn't get the email about the student survey, but I did go to Edgewood's website, and I did see that they had posted all of the submissions of comments from teachers, parents, community members, both in favor and against. And again, I was just, there was a lot of information on there. There was no tally on there, but it felt like it was a pretty mixed bag of information. And so some of the things that you're describing, Mr. Susan, I feel like they did a really good job of creating almost basically what you're, what you're talking about, gathering that information from everyone. So, I'm not, I'm not against that, but talking about a threshold and whether or not something meets it, I think is really subjective, and I think that would be really difficult to define.
You're concerned, can I follow? So you're concerned that the conversation over the why would be subjective because we as individuals might not frame it correctly? Is that what it is? Is that what you're saying? Give me a little bit more in that area.
So, I, I'm concerned that the why, if it's stemming from a student or a community member or a parent originally, what gives us the authority to decide whether or not that why is okay? It's just, to me, that's a subjective threshold, if it's offensive or inappropriate. If it offends somebody or is inappropriate to someone else, I don't understand why we would then have the right to decide whether or not that was offensive to them. I think it would be difficult to put language out there that would make that really clear.
There needs to be, what I was getting at, is there needs, that initial start needs to have some kind of clarification, classification, and something, right? You can't just get up and say, "I want to change the name of the mascot." And then, and then the other piece, just so you know, is I'm not against changing mascot names. I just want a process in place so that every time in secondary when we do this, that we don't have a group of people just making things up. And I'm not saying that in negative towards, towards Edgewood. Jackie's a friend of mine. But the bottom line is, is that we, it's just, it's just not, it's not proper policy to just let people just randomly start to change mascots without some kind of a policy in place. We as individuals in board governance should do that. That's all. So if that's, if that's to adopt what Edgewood's doing, is great. I did ask one question though, Ms. Jenkins. Did you say that you were in favor of putting in a vote to proceed from the parents, the student body, and the past presidents, and the faculty? You said there was, you agreed to the collaboration of the vote at the beginning. Is that, did you not?
No, there was no vote. What I said was that I agree with you. This needs to be something that involves the community, the parents, the students. I agree with you, I'm, I'm not against the idea of a policy. What I, what I'm uncomfortable with is that start piece that you're talking about, and whether or not it needs that threshold the way that you defined it. I don't, I don't think that that would be the start piece. I think there needs to be something else.
Ms. Campbell, you look poised to comment.
You're reading me. I, I just think when we have, I, I hear where you're going, Mr. Susan, you know, we don't, you know, if someone were to stand up at any school and say, you know, if someone were to stand up at any school and say, I think we need to change the mascot to Mickey Mouse and then we have to start on this whole process, you know, you know, does every, every, does, does every suggestion to, to change a mascot result in us having to go through this long process? I don't think it should, but it, but I don't think it has. And this, I was thinking about this particular case because this is the one that's before us. It, there was a, a buildup of interest and some discussion that had, I think if you, if we put, you know, if we put some kind of a vote before the discussion can even happen, because there was, there's been discussion, they've had presentations. You know, I know Ms. Ingrada actually made the students and the students and staff who were part of that summer focus group to even explore if they would even go this way. She made them read articles on similar issues from multiple points of view. And, you know, so I'm not really sure where you would want to put that. I mean, I just think, you know, in, in this case, it kind of happened organically that it, that it grew. You know, if we, if we want to put a policy in place just to ensure that schools in the future get a minimum level of community input that, you know, it has, and for our naming process, it has to be 18 months for you to change a name. If we want to tell schools, okay, if you're going to change a mascot, you have to at least give it, you know, six months. Don't do it overnight. You have to get community input from, community, from alumni or from teachers, from other staff, from students. You know, if we want to put those things in there, but honestly, they're, they're kind of doing that. The other ones that we came up with, the other schools that had changed their mascots were elementary schools and were made for some political, politically correct reasons. But, you know, so I don't know how many more of these we have in the future if we want to put some parameters on there. But I honestly, I would like to keep it as loose as possible, you know, so that our schools have the freedom to look at their student body and the needs that they have and say, what, what's going to best fit our school when we walk through this decision making process? So I wouldn't necessarily want to put it down to, you know, a specific, you have to do, you know, step, 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 step to go through it.
Do you think that the student body, Ms. Campbell, should approve it or disapprove it or no?
As a part of that, I, I, not necessarily. I mean, as far as, I mean, I don't, before, are you, where you're talking about putting that, are you talking about putting that before? Because I think that, I was a little confused where you want to put a, put a vote. So you're, you're, this thing I, I think I'm understanding you is when you were talking a while ago was just to even get it off the ground, you, there's a certain group of people that you would like to see that it would have to get past them before it would come to SAC.
I mean, if I wanted to change a mascot at a school, I could definitely just create a steering committee that I know would approve or move forward with the option and then start the process even though it may not be popular among the entire school. You go through a process of four or five months where people in the communities, blood pressures are up, they're attacking each other, they're going. And then my argument is, is that at the end of it, if you vote and the students are against it, I love the collaboration. Don't get me wrong. I love the debate. I love bringing it forward. But when it starts to be conducive towards education, towards our models and everything else, I, I don't know if it is. So the question is, is that I would like to create a policy that creates a threshold of a vote of something that allows the process to start. And then I would like to have everybody weigh in on that decision at the end. I don't think that this is a decision that should be made without the student body. I don't think that this is a decision that should be made without the teachers or the parents. I think that they should weigh in on this. And I think that when we start skirting some of that, we start skirting and trying to pass, to do things that don't involve the people that we serve, the taxpayers, the students that we represent. That's all. And whether that passes or not within the school is one thing, but I would like to move forward with a policy that has some thresholds that if there's a vote, it doesn't pass. If there's a vote and it's improved, then it moves forward and then the process follows and stuff. But I would like to have a discussion at a board workshop and bring it forward. And that's what I'm asking for.
Okay. I need, can I jump? Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just going to say, currently, we don't even have a decision, I don't have anything that says that SAC is the one that votes. I mean, it could be a principal on their own. I mean, I don't think they would do that. None of our principals would do that. But, you know, it's not, it's not clear where, you know, where the final decision lies.
So does that say that you mean that you will support us moving towards a workshop on a policy?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay, I'm not going to.
You don't want?
No, I'm not going to because for umpteen years, we have not had a policy on mascots. And our schools have done a great job of picking the mascots. And it isn't just the principal and it isn't just the students. It is the whole community. So we are now getting involved in, to me, running the school, which is to me, the principal and the community's job. So no, I'm, I will not be supporting us going forward with a policy.
Can I follow up with Ms.? It is our duty as our school board members to run our schools, run our programs and everything else. I do believe that the community should be involved in that piece in the beginning. I do believe that this is an area where we should have a policy in place, but I disagree with letting them run the school. I, I understand the autonomy of that, but we are governance and we are budget. And if there's a policy that needs to be put into place, I think that, I, I truly believe also that if we leave it up to a non-majority group to change the mascot in a community that does not have it supported by the others and we don't show it with transparency and accountability and clarity, that, that we run into a problem. So that's why we have policies. So I would argue that I would like to see us move towards a workshop on, and bring forward. And we have other examples and stuff like that, but I would like to do it in a workshop forum rather than a 10-minute discussion at the end of our thing. That's all. And if you guys don't feel like that, then we don't do it. And go from there.
So we have kind of had the practice as a governing body that if one of the board members wants to have a discussion on something, we, we have a discussion on it. And so I think that's a good practice for us as a team regardless of how we feel that we take the time to have the discussion, right? I have some concerns about a couple of the things that you recommend, Mr. Susan. It's not, I feel like it's difficult to grasp exactly what it is that you are wanting us to look at. So for example, I struggle with doing a vote before there's been an opportunity to educate because I feel like people aren't necessarily voting based on knowledge. They're just voting on, on gut feeling, right? So if you, for example, require that we're going to survey the parents, the students, and did you say past presidents?
Take, take opinion from past presidents of students. Student body presidents who have been there and given what they believe, they may say, you know what? You're right. We tried to do this for years and this is a great thing. But let that tradition come into what we're trying to do. That's all.
And I, I like the inclusion of the past presidents, but I, I think where we get into really sticky waters is our, our community owns our schools. All of the taxpayers of the county own our schools, right? So yes, there is the aspect of the, the teachers, the students, the parents, that I absolutely think their input should be included. But I don't think that we can limit to that. I think we have to have the community aspect. And then I'm not sure how we set a certain threshold. So if we're going to ask everyone who is zoned for that school, like every resident in that geographic area to weigh in, are we going to say in the situation of Edgewood, them being a choice school, people, you know what I mean? I just, I think it's hard to nail down, especially to say prior to even beginning conversation around the issue, we're going to require this threshold of a vote from whoever before we even begin the discussion. Like I said, not, not opposed to having the conversation. If you would like to put that on, on upcoming workshop schedule, I think we can go into more depth. But these are just some of the, the things that came to mind as you were, were talking about the recommendation. I still am, am absolute that I don't think it should be a board decision. I think it should be a school-based decision. And if we want to, as Ms. Campbell referenced before, establish a minimum criteria for input, I'm not necessarily opposed to doing that, but I, I'm not interested in making it a board decision. I think it needs to be a decision of the parents, the students, the teachers and the community members that it would impact.
Ms. Belford, thank you. So difficulty to grasp, I get it. Like you're trying to figure out, do you do a referendum within the school, the limits? That's very difficult to do. And you're right, and the cost and everything else over a mascot, that's not fair to do to the process because that would bog it down. But I don't think I hear anybody in here saying that they're against a vote by the student body, a vote by the teachers. They just, it's a different time period of where it is after education, which is fair. That's fair. I mean, if somebody wants to make a point and make an argument, we have to give that platform. So I guess that's what, part of what I would like to do is figure out where that, that vote would occur, where that threshold, how, right, in a board discussion. I, I truly believe that there needs to be somehow a, a policy here. And I agree with you. I think you said it should be the board's decision, not a school-based decision.
Could not be the board's.
Not be the board's decision. Tried to put words there.
Nice try.
But the, we can make a policy that it is a school-based decision, but at least we have an infrastructure that we can work within. And I think that if we can get there, it just really bothers me that, in my experience in governance, that, that this is something that we're, we're just allowing schools to just go do and it, and it, with, with such a hot button issue. That's all. So if you can put it on a, a board workshop, and we don't mind doing that, with the idea that it's framed around a part where there's an education piece and then a vote depending on there, I would love to have that discussion.
Board members, are you open for that discussion of establishing some minimum criteria?
Can I just ask a question? Does anyone know offhand how many times this has actually happened in our county?
Secondary?
So the other thing, and I know that this is going to sound almost like I'm mocking and I don't mean that by any means whatsoever. But then, you know, what if they want to change their school color? Are we going to create a policy to change school colors?
We've actually had that issue and that has been handled at the school level. Oftentimes the complaints do come to the board level, but it's been handled.
Right. It just seems, seems equivalent to me almost.
One of the challenges in this is going to be, I believe, Mr. Gibbs, you can correct me if I remember incorrectly, but there's not, no other school board that Mr. Gibbs had found has a policy based on mascot. So we're going to have a, we're going to have to build this one from scratch. Am I?
Hillsborough has one. It is very basic. It says more or less, we direct the superintendent to develop a procedure for changing a mascot.
So there's that. I'm assuming then there's no policy template from the OLA?
No, there's not.
Okay.
So are we comfortable with reserving time on a board workshop to have additional discussion on a minimum procedure for this type of thing in the future?
Does that mean that you have to?
No.
I don't mean to bother this process, obviously, so I apologize.
Yeah, no. It just means, as I said, typically if a board member wants to have discussion around something, we honor the request for that. I think Dr. Sullivan has worked very closely with the process at Edgewood and can probably provide a pretty thorough outline of the process and things that have taken place that we could take a look at and see if there are, you know, questions, concerns there. So, and if, you know, we're not setting a, a specific date, but for when we have an, an open workshop session moving forward, we can reserve some time for that discussion. Mr. Gibbs, you look poised to speak as well.
I was just going to say, I'm happy to work with Mr. Susan on a, whatever he's trying to try and put what he is envisioning into words. That might help the board kind of grasp what he is trying to do so you can then evaluate that and tweak it if you want.
I would like to have it to where there's a threshold that needs to be voted on, to where the majority of the individuals that are involved in that school approve it so that there's not a way that a small minority can pass something that the majority doesn't want. I'm not saying that from the board level. I'm saying that from the school level. That's it. And I would like that as part of the process.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs, for offering to work through that process. We appreciate you. Additional discussion points? Mr. Susan, you requested that we discuss the Harry Timor.
Yep.
And may I ask that Mr. Gibbs have an opportunity to, do you want to provide an update? Are you at a point where you can provide an update of those concerns? Do you want to have board members speak to you individually on that or?
I haven't finished yet, so I'm not really to a concluding point.
Okay.
I know that no one has officially, no other district has officially reinstated that we could find someone as far as saying we're rescinding the termination. They have passed resolutions acknowledging past wrong, if you will, and they've read those into the record and passed like proclamations and resolutions, but I have not found a, you know, we're reinstating someone terminated after their deceased.
And my understanding for the reasoning for that is that there are potential legal ramifications of doing so, right?
There, there could be, yes. That's what I don't have a grasp on yet.
So where I wanted to speak in the, the scope of it was as a teacher, I was one of the individuals that worked with the school district on getting kids from the high schools up to the Harry Timor Center every year, right? And we took, you know, the, the kids and, I forget how many kids we targeted and we brought them up there. We went through the tour. And I always thought that that was really good, but what we don't do is incorporate what he was and what he did into our curriculum. And I think that that is what we're missing here, is that our kids can go for a field trip for the day and they will learn. But what we don't have is, and, but it's just, it's very difficult to reinforce that piece. And it's something that I think that we should move forward with entering inside of our local Florida curriculum, both either in the eighth grade American history or the 10th grade, African-American history class that we have. We can add that. And so, what? I know, but think about it. If you're teaching in fourth grade, can you talk about lynchings? Can you talk about all the things that are going on in there with the descriptive side that, that occurred during that time? I, I think it's difficult. So I think that I would like to add it in. And it's something that as an American history teacher, American government teacher, I think that I have a little bit of, of experience in, in doing that. I think that I would like to work with the Harry Timor Foundation to create a supplemental piece that we can use for the teachers to use. So that when they get to the civil rights, they can say that this was an individual that was within the community that did this and start, because I think we miss it there. So I'm in favor of doing the fourth grade. I'm in favor of going a little bit further and doing it. And that's what I wanted to say.
I too am supportive of the concept, absolutely. I think there are a lot of pieces to work through. Obviously, we currently aren't doing field trips, which poses a challenge for doing field trips.
Do virtual.
The Harry Timor Center. But yes, potentially virtual and, and, you know, that may help to overcome a funding issue as well because that's, that's going to be a big challenge to transport students. Typically, those, the, the big field trips like that are, you know, covered by Brouard Schools Foundation donations and that sort of thing. So
Yeah, you're right.
Certainly some hurdles there, but I don't think anything that we can't work through as far as doing some work on that. And Dr. Mullins, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that fits into some of our equity priorities going forward. So perhaps.
Yeah. As a matter of fact, I, I'd love to point out, Dr. Danielle McClain is here this evening, our Director of Equity and Diversity, and already connected her with Mr. Calucci and Mr. Savage to continue the conversation and see what we can do.
Have you guys all rang the bell at Harry Timor? Right? Wow. And it sets a message. And I think our kids need to do that. I think they need to feel that bell. I think they need to hit that thing because it's something that, that I think is memorable.
I have one quick discussion point that I did not add to the agenda, but if you all would be so kind as to indulge me. We had our Central Florida Public School Board Coalition meeting, I think Friday. Russ and I were in attendance. And just for some information, this particular meeting, they pulled in the in-house lobbyists from all of the other member districts from the Central Florida School Board Coalition. And they each provided us some legislative updates. And there are a couple you all may already be aware, but I just want to make sure that these things are mentioned. So you probably are aware that the legislature is having their organizational meeting this evening as well. And so initial leadership has been appointed in both the Senate and the House. That'll be made official this evening and then, you know, additional leader, leadership positions will be identified. A couple of changes. The House typically only allows six bills per legislator. They're actually allowing them seven bills per legislator this year and about 10 more days to get their bills in. The, this one not so much impacting us because we don't have any individual appropriation requests, but one of the things that they said was in previous years, if we put in an individual appropriation request for Brouard County, like for our welding program or our manufacturing program, those sorts of things, there was a tendency for us to put in, if we needed 500,000, we might request 750,000, knowing we're probably not going to get the full allocation and maybe we could still cover with whatever allocation they gave. They are pushing back pretty hard on that from the appropriations leadership and saying that they want us to keep our requests very close and that any organization requesting those individual appropriations must file an attestation as to how those funds will be used and what the actual cost of the project is. Many of the subcommittees have been identified. They did add an additional subcommittee, the pandemic and health emergency committee has been formed in the legislature. And so they'll be looking at some of the issues around COVID. Couple of the big things though, that I think are, are important and disappointing at the same time. Last year, as you all know, we had a significant hit on FRS, increasing the amount of money that the district had to pay to FRS. And the state is anticipating another 300 and mil, $380 million shortfall in FRS this year. And we know that education and health are the two biggest areas of the budget. And so we are likely to carry the brunt of that FRS increase as a district again. And the governor's recommendation is a $10 increase in the BSA. Last year, we had a $75 increase in the BSA. The recommendation this year is only a $10 increase in the BSA plus an additional increase in the FRS as well as potential adjustments to budget based on state shortfall. So just important, I think, for us to keep an, keep an eye on that. Multiple times it was mentioned that we need to be very careful with the dollars that we have because they're not anticipating good news for us budget-wise for a few years to come. There, it, there was some discussion about accountability in school grades. With the state requiring the prior, prior, prior year for making school grades as opposed to just prior year. The problem with the way that it was presented to us initially with the prior, prior year, which was what was, was presented by our team with their concerns, is that the statute actually requires prior year. So they are anticipating that there will be a change, change in the statute to potentially allow prior, prior year for calculation, which I don't know that that's a good thing for us. But I think those were the big highlights of the meeting. There was a, some discussion about the teacher's salary allocation and some concerns. The hope seemingly across our, our committee is that we get the same amount this year that we got last year. Seems to be very little hope that we will get an additional increase in that teacher salary allocation this year. And as you all know, potentially that would mean if we did not get the same amount of dollars, we would have to make up dollars because we have those salary commitments. So lots of really bright news as we just begin to convene our, our legislators for this session. But I will continue to pass that information along as it comes and we'll do our best to stay on. stay on top of it. And I think you all received the FSBA final platforms for state as well as federal. Billy Anson sent that out to you all yesterday. They did not, the only, pretty much the only thing they picked up from ours was mental health increases, so.
So they didn't take the pre-K?
Did not take the pre-K. They're still digging their heels in on the, yeah.
I'll get it.
Yep.
Can I say something to the tail end of what you said?
Sure.
This is going to be the biggest fight of our lives for budget. And just because the state tells us that this is what we have doesn't mean that we have to take it. It doesn't mean that we have to take what they say. This is our budget, our taxes, locally going to them. They then make the decision up there to us. That does not mean that we have to sit back and allow them to tell us what we're going to get. We can fight for our taxes from our community to go to us the right way. And that's not being negative. That's telling them what we as individuals feel is important to us. We just had a massive support for a half penny. That means our community's behind this school district. We don't need to sit back and say, "Yes, sir. Thank you for giving me this." Let's go fight for it. Let's go tell them what we want for education and make it known. We consistently are standing there. We go, we shake hands, we go up to the Capitol once a year. Let's go. Let's go make it known that this is the time to fight for education. We're all losing budgets. I've watched this in 2000. I watched this when I worked in the Capitol Building. I was an intern in 1998 in the Capitol Building. I was up there in 2000 to 2004 when the budgets start cutting, and they just decided to do a straight cut across the boards. Advocacy gets us to where we are, and if we sit back and allow them to do that to us, we're just going to get pinned. And I just don't have it in me anymore to just sit back. So I'm going to start going up more often, and then I'd appreciate the support when we go. And if FSBA doesn't want to pick up the pre-K, I'll get it done.
Well, and I would remind you, Mr. Susan, that that still is one of our local priorities. So I don't think any of us are backing down on those things that we identified here locally.
No, not you. Please don't let me think that. I'm just fired up right now because I'm tired of people telling us stuff.
Very good.
I would just add to, one of the other things that will impact us moving forward is, that was passed on election night, was the Amendment Two, or Three, Two, increasing the minimum wage to $10 an hour starting in September. And that doesn't, we don't get any additional funding. We don't have a lot of positions below $10, but that will be impacting us for the next five, six years, so we just need to be cognizant of that moving forward, starting with next year's budget. And I know, Dr. Mullins, they're already taking a look at that.
There's massive increases in kindergarten coming back because kids are keeping, parents are keeping their kids back in pre-K because of this? We're going to see an increase, massive increase of teachers in kindergarten. Our budgets are going to be fluxing everywhere. For them to start cutting back at a time when we're going to need, there's a lot of good arguments to be made, Ms. Campbell. And I say we start to make them and don't hold back. Soon as they come back, we got a meeting with them, right? Okay, here we go.
Are you leaving us, Mr. Susan?
I thought you guys, I thought you had the gavel.
I do have the gavel, but I haven't gavelled.
I'm ready to go to Tallahassee. Let's go.
Going to drive there now. There's nobody yet. Well, they're busy.
No, they're there right now. I know where they are. They're there. Let's go.
Yes, they're all there right now. All right. Anyone else, any other board members have additional board discussion items? Then, Dr. Mullins, do you have a superintendent's report?
Not tonight, thank you.
All right. There being no further.
I really want these grounds that you made.
There being no further business, this meeting is now adjourned. Have a great night.